Councilmember Mollicka?
Here.
Councilmember Sowers?
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Becky Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Whitman?
Here.
Councilmember Escobal?
Here.
Thank you. Would you stand to join me in the next? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any agenda additions or deletions from council? Okay. Next, we have an interview. Lauren Weatherly for the Historic Preservation Commission. How are you this evening?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm very good, thank you. Would you introduce yourself and tell the council a little bit about you and also why you want to join the commission?
Sure. I'm Lauren, and I've lived in Northland for about four years. I lived over on Rapp in 99. And I, excuse me, I've always had a personal interest and passion for history. I studied it a little bit in college and have worked on some historic projects, history projects, around education history. I'm a teacher and I work for a school in Boulder, and I've actually done a lot of community engagement types of projects on behalf of my school involving getting youth involved in community and different types of, different types of things like that. And since moving to Northland almost four years ago, I've wanted to get more involved in the community I live in. So this seems like a really great opportunity to kind of just get involved in something that's personally very interesting to me.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to make a comment that Lauren has attended two of our meetings so far, plus she helped us over the weekend with Old Fashioned Christmas and baked some really good cookies and really was a valuable asset.
I also have an interest in baking.
Perfect. So with that, I'll just open it up to questions. Anyone have any questions for Lauren? No? Oh my gosh, you covered all the bases. Well, thank you so much for your interest and coming this evening and we'll let you know.
Great, thanks for your consideration.
Okay, thank you so much.
It's great to meet you.
Next is public invited to be heard five minutes per speaker. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Okay, seeing no one approach, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we'll open the vote.
The vote is open.
It went away somewhere.
It's at the very bottom. You have to kind of scroll it.
I know, I had it up.
Yeah. Got it?
All right, I'll close that vote and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is resolutions. Joanna?
This is CR 161, a resolution adopting the Third Amendment to the amended and restated City of Northland General Employees Pension Plan.
Second.
Mayor, council members, this is the first resolution tonight that deals with amendments to our employee pension pay plan, and it's in accordance with some new revised regulations in the IRS Department. There's a summary in your memo, and if you have any further questions, I'll have Jason address those.
Okay, thank you. Hearing done, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote and CR 161 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 164.
A resolution adopting the Third Amendment to the amended and restated City of Northland Police Money Purchase Pension Plan.
Move to approve.
Second.
David?
Mayor, council members, this is a second resolution to get us in sync with IRS regulations, and it has to do with the police money purchase pension plan.
Questions? Hearing done, please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote and CR 164 passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we have discussion items. 104th Avenue and I-25 ramp landscaping.
Mayor, council members, this particular item was on a discuss and was on a study session, and I'd like Debbie and Matt are here tonight just to present to you basically a lot of work that's been done on 104th landscaping. I think it's a fabulous plan and certainly a substantial improvement of what's out there now. So I'd like to have them come up and just show you some pictures and we're hopeful to get your endorsement on this.
Very good. I know, sometimes it doesn't.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to introduce Matt Whipple. He's with DHM Designs. He's been working with us for almost a year on this project. We're extremely excited. In your packet, you received the plan that has been approved by the city, the NERA board. This has gone through many phases, and we had a design charrette back, let's see, when was that, in September?
September.
September, right. And so we had, during this process, we've had NERA, we've had city staff from the planning department, from the Parks and Recs department, street departments, everybody's been involved in this. During the charrette, we had some council members there, we had a member of the Parks and Rec Board there, we had NERA members there, and we had staff there. Originally, this plan actually has been on the NERA budget to do for many years, at least five, because I've been here four and a half and it was on there before I was there. This year, we budgeted $500,000, a half a million to do the landscaping. We started out with minimal landscaping, and what I wanted to do is kind of show you where we are right now, and then Matt's going to present where we are now. So just, we did, just for information purposes, I know it's in your memo, but for the public, we did increase the budget up to $1 million. You know, our goal is, this is a city gateway. We want to make it enhanced landscaping. Instead of just landscaping, we added monumentation, walls, and lighting. But for purposes, for tonight's meeting, again, I just wanted to show you a slide of the four intersections. So this is the southeast corner and I-25 and 104th Avenue. So you can see here, we'll be talking about this and how that's going to be different. Let's tell you the lies. Here's the southwest corner of I-25 and 104th Avenue. Again, we'll be talking about this piece right here. This is the northwest corner of I-25 and 104th Avenue, and we're going to show another, probably another board that specifically shows you how much room is actually being done. This one kind of shows you, but the other ones don't. But Matt will go over that in just a moment.
Okay.
And then the northeast corner of I-25 and 104th Avenue. So those are the four corners. We will be doing all four of them. And what I'm going to do now is turn it over to Matt Whipple to show you what our final plan is and to get your comments and ideas. So Matt, why don't you?
Debbie, would it be okay to switch back to the southeast corner?
Also Debbie, I don't know, has everyone in the urban renewal seen this? I know there in the audience, is there anyone here that has not seen these?
All the NERA people have seen it.
Yeah, okay, all right, because I just want to make sure.
Mayor, this is a plan that I believe NERA has adopted as their final plan, so we're just hopeful to show it to you and get your opinion on this.
All right, I was just wanting to make sure that everybody saw it.
So southeast corner of I-25 and 104th?
Sure. Thanks again, I'm Matthew Whipple with DHM Design.
Matt, can you come over to the podium and speak from the podium side so that anybody who's listening, our audience, will be able to hear you? I don't think they'll be able to pick it up. Our mics aren't great here, so that would be better for our audience. Thank you.
No problem. So you see here the southeast corner of I-25 and 104th. The far border over here is a representation of what we've come up with. Large-scale entry monument as a gateway into the city. This project started off as just landscaping, but it lacked impact, so this is, this is what our entire design process has finally come up with. Looking at the rendering, it doesn't, it doesn't show the scale of what this is really going to look like. So here's another board that kind of shows just how big this is to scale, and you can see the size of the cars to what this actual landscape that is going to look like. It is very sizable. So we've got our large-scale entry monument, lighting, landscaping. One of the other things that we're suggesting is the existing entry monument to update that as well to reflect changes or additions to that median with the stone facade, sandstone caps, more lighting. We're going to move the letters off of the small wall that sits there. We're actually going to remove those letters and put in new letters that are about six inches taller per letter, so. And then you can see the bottom rendering is just that nighttime shot. So we want to light up the monument, we want to light up the walls as they kind of come around, and the existing entry, or the existing monument on the bridge. So, the south, and this is what we're going to do on the northwest median and the southeast. So the ramps coming into Northland off of I-25. The southwest and northeast medians, you're going to get the same treatment with the walls, the terrace walls for layering effect. The only difference is you're not going to have this large-scale entry monument. You're leaving the city. You're getting back on the interstate, so we didn't, we didn't put them in there. So, and again, you can see just how big this is. Your cars are to scale.
Okay.
It's, it's very sizable. And we're going to do that again, we're going to do this treatment here, stone walls, terrace landscaping. We're going to update the existing columns that are on the bridges, lighting all the way through.
Okay.
All right. Questions?
Comments?
Comments? Debbie?
I would say also the plant pallets and all of the trees, all of the plants, all of the grass areas have been approved by Parks and Rec to make sure that they were maintainable and water-friendly. We might want to touch base on that.
Sure. All, all planting, the entire planting pallet for, for all of the medians are very well conscious, not quite exeric. Some of the, some of the trees do require a little water, but they're all very low water.
So are we going to have to install water use systems?
Yes, as part of this project, we will get irrigation systems as well.
It would be part of the $1 million.
Any other questions?
I liked it. I especially like the lighting at night.
Me too.
Me as well.
I mean, I have no issues with it at all. My question is, is this all 104th, this is all in Northland, 120th, what, do we just have one corner, or do we have the two?
We have two corners.
Two corners. Have we thought about anything there?
We could.
We're waiting to see how things kind of roll out?
Well, I think we can evaluate that in the NERA budget right now because we have money in the NERA 1 budget, that's why we wanted to spend the money here. NERA 2, as you probably know, the only tipp clocks that have been started as of today is the Garland Center and the Civic Center. We will be coming to council going forward to ask for permission to include all of NERA 2. But we're always behind a year, so the tax increment financing will start building up in URA 2, but it hasn't yet. In fact, we've actually spent money in URA 2 from URA 1's budget, so that's the reasoning why. But I think it's a great idea to do 120 as well.
I just, I just want to make sure that that was, you know, whether it's a year or two down the line.
I think we're going to see this and we're going to be so proud of it. We'll definitely want to get URA, we'll want to get 120th done as well.
I think visually, it definitely separates us from Thornton.
Mm-hmm.
So I really do like it.
I think if we could put Christmas lights.
Yeah.
I think it's a, I think it's a great entryway for the city too, and that's what I really like. You know, I know that we had talked about, you know, kind of what Loveland had did and, you know, and how amazing that is and how welcoming it is, you know, to come in, so I think that, yeah, I'm impressed, so, great job.
I just have one question.
Kim, did you? Go ahead. No, go ahead, Kim. Kim, did you have?
Yeah, I just want to request that we get these nighttime vision, these photos into the, into the document online, because right now it's just the top two.
Right.
And I, for one, even though I have my glasses on, I can't see that. So I'm having a hard time just seeing what the heck it is, and I think it would be nice for our residents to be able to see, see the night lighting and everything with that. And then also maybe pictures of what the, what we currently have. Because I think you were talking about there, at the ends of the bridges, we have our ends on it currently or something, and you're planning on taking those off, is what I heard.
Not the end, but refacing, refacing this area so that it matches the bridges.
Okay, that's what I was trying to clarify.
What we're going to add is use a stone facade.
A stone facade.
To the bottom portion of it.
Right.
Okay, because I'm like, it looks solid on here and plain, and I thought that we had something in those little squares already, and they're not represented on these drawings that I'm seeing, so I was just checking for clarification. And the maintenance is, it's low maintenance as well. Will it still need to be mowed and weeded and all of those things?
And as stated in my memo, we do have a C.DOT draft memorandum of understanding for the city to maintain the ramps after tonight and hopefully the approval of this, then we'll go back, get the C.DOT memo, you put together, we've been working with Amanda and with Matt, we've got that pretty much finalized to bring back to you for approval, but we didn't want to do that until we got through this step.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Mercy?
Is the grass area, is that kind of keeping the same style of grass that is already there, or is it new?
No, you're correct. It's, it's just the same native seed, but we're going to overseed it, and we're also adding irrigation to the lower end of the wall all the way around that broadcast further out, so it will, as dry as it is.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, I think it's great. It really looks nice, yeah.
One final, when do we expect this to happen? I didn't see a timeline in the presentation, so I just wondered when we might see this.
As, as my second paragraph indicated, our goal is to get an RFP out in January for the construction-related work. We're hoping that we'll be able to get lower prices because it's in the winter to start that construction work, and, and have that done by March, and the actual landscaping we would put in in spring, early summer.
Okay. Anyone else? And NERA likes it?
Yes.
I see some smiling faces, kind of smiling faces there. Okay, there you go. All right. Well, we'll expect something in the near future from, from the guys in. Okay, thank you.
Construction going out there and the C.DOT memorandum of understanding coming forward, you'll know we're getting started on it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming this evening. Looks great. All right, next, Kim, speed bumps, speed control.
I asked for this to be put on the agenda and for us to discuss this criteria and if we're still good with that. And this all comes about because I know, since I've been on council and since Jean had been on council, we've received multiple requests for speed bumps in some of the areas over in Ward 4. As you can see from this criteria, it's dated 1995, and I just think that it's something that we need to take a look at and make sure that it's updated. Number one, I don't know that we have been putting a budget of $15,000 per year in the CIP for speed bumps, and so I just think that we need to take a look at this and see, rather than just telling our residents, "Sorry, we're not going to do speed bumps. Have a nice day." I think that we need to really be conscious of what we're doing and have good, sound reasoning for it. And in here, you know, really there wasn't much to, whatever, if this is a policy, I don't know if it was adopted, you know, it has the average daily count, but that's about all that's referenced in here, so I just wanted to bring it up, and I didn't want it to wait for February.
Well, I think it's a good idea to take a look at it. It is, you know, something that we have, we should take a look at it. It's very old, you know, when we, when I went on council years ago, and we've made some changes prior to this, so this is the most current. Now, I will say that we usually send out the criteria to people when they ask for speed bumps, because it is, it can be expensive, because folks think they need or want speed bumps, and then, you know, they get them in, and then all of a sudden, the complaints come in, and then it's very costly to remove them. So I think it's worthy of us to take a look at it, but I think it's more of a study session that we should really talk about this.
Well, like I said, I, I, this has been on the radar for quite a while, and it just hadn't come up, so I wanted to make sure that we at least get the initial one so that it doesn't fall off of our radar and that we do something.
Okay.
And I know anytime we have these issues come up, typically we'll have our, our initial response is we'll send the police officers out to monitor the situation and do that for several hours for a couple of days. And typically what ends up happening is that it's the residents themselves that live in the area who are getting the tickets. So I don't know if it's just a matter of education or what we need to do. You know, I, I think speed bumps are, I'm not in favor of ever installing them in our neighborhoods, because I think in our community with snow, it impedes it too much, but I did want to make sure that we brought it up and had a council discussion on it, not just me and Jean telling people no.
Yeah. Well, I think we've all had, had questions or requests for speed bumps, and after, after they receive the criteria, then it's kind of like that they don't go forward with it. And the other thing too, if I remember correctly, and I did read this, but I don't remember now, you know, they have to have almost 100% of the individuals on that street, you know, in order to get the speed bumps put in, because of the costliness of removing them afterwards. And you're right, I usually, it's the residents themselves, they're the ones that get the tickets, so.
And then get mad because they got a ticket.
Right, right, so.
I don't know what situation.
Does anybody else have any comments or want to move forward with that? Yeah, here.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry that I was late, and I'm sorry if anything's going to be redundant on speed bumps, but that was a big thing for me, and I'm glad that you brought it forward, because really, since I've been on council, I have a lot of calls about speed bumps. Now, I'm thinking, because I caught the tail of end of what you're saying, I might be a little bit opposite, because I'm thinking some neighborhoods should have speed bumps. And I don't know if our criteria is too strict, but every time I kind of bring it to staff, it's just like, this is what it is, and then nobody follows up on it, and it just gets pushed to the side. So yes, I want to discuss it, and yes, I would like to see comparisons to other cities, and I think it's important, so thank you for bringing that forward.
Yeah, I think there's alternatives also. It doesn't have to always be speed bumps, but you can have other types of things, so I think we need to look at everything rather than just speed bumps.
Right. I mean, a city like Thornton, and I drive through their developments, they have speed barrier devices everywhere, and it seems strange that when people ask in Northland, it's always a no, so I would, I would like to talk about it a little bit more.
All right. Is there anyone else? So why don't we put in February, or whenever the next time is, and we can, and then you can have the comparisons and a little more detail to it also.
I think it would help us also know if we can get a map of which areas, based on this current criteria, would completely be excluded. I know it's our collector streets, and I think those are sometimes the ones that people really want them on the most. I think that might be helpful, if that's available.
Yeah, I can certainly check this document for currency, and we can check what other communities do, just for council information. We usually, the speed bumps really are only implied for low-speed roads, and they're only residential, so any kind of collector or arterial would be at real danger to put any kind of control device on the road like that. So anyway, on this particular criteria, it is fairly old, we can certainly check it for currency, check it, check relatively to other, other cities what they do. I too have been through Thornton, they do have some speed control bumps on their, for instance, up on, by 168th Avenue, they have, have some up there in the New Neighbor Road across from Lockridge Mall, they have some. So I, we can certainly look into those.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All right. Thanks, Kim, for bringing that up. All right, next is communications. We'll start with Antonio. Any communications? Antonio? No? Okay. Mercy?
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out and staff for doing a great job at Noel Northland. I think it was wonderful to share and just appreciate all the work that goes into it.
Yes? Becky?
I had a fabulous week. We got to go see, to the grand opening for Scissorhands, which was awesome. I loved walking in there. Actually, I got my hair done. Really enjoyed the staff there, thought that was, that was really nice. And then we also participated in the ribbon cutting at Glamour's.
That's right.
Right. And it was very nice, friendly people. It's great to see all the, all the new businesses coming in, you know, it really builds a positive feeling for the city, and I like being a part of it.
Okay. Thank you.
I did go to the No Shave November shave-off just to see what was going on there, so that was pretty interesting. It was at Floyd's Barber Shop, and they donate their services. It was really kind of fun to watch everybody get a nice hot shave, and they raised four, over $4,000 for the American Cancer Society, so a great event. Let's see, I want to remind everybody that the Senior Christmas Luncheon is next Friday, the 18th, at noon. So if you would like to attend, you have to reserve ahead of time, call Kate Fisher, and take care of that, and that's always fun.
They didn't let Susan know about it this time, or she didn't send it. Always Susan always tells us. I haven't gotten anything, so we need to get that done.
Well, there you go. It's Friday, the 18th.
All right.
Remember to get out and count the lights on the fire truck that's at the Marketplace. It will be there until December 18th, open to ages 2 through 18, and it is on loan from the Historic Reservation Commission, so thank you for that. And this is the great news, Acapella Series starts already in January. January 15th is the first show, so I am very excited. Please attend, try it one time, and I swear you'll go to all of them. So the very first band is called The 17th Avenue All-Stars. They do a mixture of genres. Start times are always 7:30. It's $10, $8 for youth and seniors, and it is really a fun evening, so think about attending. And then I did want to push one more time, the 1940's Radio Hour put on by the Northland Players will start this Friday, the 11th, this weekend and next weekend only. It is a holiday show with music and dance, so please attend that also.
Okay, all right. The only thing I'll, several of us council people attended, you know, the ribbon cuttings and many of those things. Also, several council attended the Old Fashioned Christmas over at Stonehawker this weekend, and we had a lot, live entertainment, there was a lot of folks that came, and we actually had an antique sleigh from Carl's Dairy. They gave it to us on loan, and the kids were climbing on it and having pictures taken. It really was very nice, so thank, thank the Carl's Dairy family for that. So with that.
So we had our last Finance Committee meeting of the year, and we are reviewing the council travel policy, which also includes the budget, the individual budgets for the council members. Once it's all written up, it'll come to us for review, so just to give you guys a heads up, it's coming down the pike, so.
Great. I had a chance to go to the Old Fashioned Christmas in Noel this weekend. Very thankful for the staff and the community that came out, but also the green chili at the, at the Old Fashioned Christmas, and the baked goods were incredible. Immaculate Heart of Mary's annual Christmas giveaway at their food bank is the 17th, from 9:00 to 11:30. They're doing gift certificates, coats, and bikes. And also, there's still more volunteers needed for the snowstormers. I signed up and have a great family, and if you have any questions, contact Jenny Murphy. I know they need a few more, especially with the amount of snow we've had. I think that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Kyle?
I attended Dr. Cog a couple of weeks ago, and so some good things came out of that. I think one thing I want to stress and maybe have the city staff look at is, there's nominations for some awards for some projects are due next month, and so I think that if we can take a look at that and see if there's anything that we can throw our hat in the ring with that should be nominated, I would love to see us do that, and so I'm, I'm really enjoying that board, and so, yeah, that's it.
Kim?
Number one, I just wanted to apologize. At our last meeting, I made a comment that our interviewer, our new members for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board hadn't been, had a chance to go before that board, and they had had a meeting, I just hadn't been notified of the meeting, and they did have that opportunity. So my apologies for...
of the meeting and they did have that opportunity, so my apologies for having spoken incorrect information for everyone. And number two, I just wanted to send my condolences to the family of Jordan Pearl Mutter. He has passed away and for those residents who've been here a long time, they'll certainly recognize his name and he started many of the developments of our housing here in the city and it's a tremendous loss for the economic development world, I think, as well as just, as part of North Glenn's past. So my condolences to his family and that's it. Thank you.
Joanna?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
David?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Nothing?
Nor for me as well.
Okay, all right then. We'll move on the agenda to public invited to be heard. Is there anyone that would like to speak to council for any length of time? I said that because I don't see anybody running up here. And they're still sitting there, so, okay, well, then I will move to go into, I will adjourn and go into executive session pursuant to Section 4.5b of the City of North Glenn Home Rule Charter for the review of applications for any appointive, appointed position. Interviews and appointments shall be conducted at an open meeting.
Second.
Discussion. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
We'll close that vote and the motion to adjourn to executive session passes unanimously.
Thank you.